Good evening, everyone. Going to call the Talaqua City Council regular meeting to order. It is Monday, October the seventh, 2024, and it is 5:30 PM. We get a roll call, please.
Counselor Perry?
Here.
Counselor Baker?
Here.
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 Now, I have the invocation by Pastor Bobby Musgrove of River Valley Church.
And, and Bobby, this is not Bobby Musgrove. So Bobby could not be here. So Brad is from the same church he stepped in. So welcome.
It's an honor to stand before you. Uh, no, I'm not Pastor Bobby, but however, I know that we drank the same amount of coffee, so. All right, so let's go to our Lord in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for giving all of us the opportunity to gather here today to serve our wonderful city of Talaqua. God, thank you for blessing Talaqua with great leaders who have a servant's heart, who strive to make a positive impact for our citizens. Help lead all of us and guide us and our leaders to make the right decisions for the right reasons with keeping you at the forefront of our lives. Also, Lord, the month of October is nationally known as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we ask for comfort and healing for those in domestic violence situations. And God, please bless and comfort those who are impacted by the terrible hurricane. Please guide and protect those who are giving aid and comfort to those who are suffering due to that tragic disaster. Lord, in closing, please forgive all of us when we fail you. And we ask of all of these things in our Lord and Savior, Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Brad. Comments will be accepted from the public and individuals will be limited to three minutes of speaking time. The total of all comments should not exceed fifteen minutes. Preference will be given to Talaqua residents in compliance with the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act. No action or discussion is permitted by the city council on any issue or topic raised by a speaker during this public comment period. Do we have anyone who wants to make a public comment?
I do.
Please come to the podium and state your name.
I'll get there.
I know, I know. No rush.
Well, this is the speed. You only got one speed, so.
Place this forward.
Hi, I'm Jeff Thorne, and I'm the guy who put those blue folders on your desks. That blue folder is for you to read at your leisure. Um, it's about my nonprofit called Step Up Talaqua, about two and a half years old. And that's what we're trying to do. So just some information, and uh, thank you for letting me speak.
Well, thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, move on. Consent item, items are placed on the agenda so that members of the city council can designate routine items to be approved by one motion. Any consent agenda item not meeting with the approval of all council members will be removed and heard in regular session.
Uh, I would like to take off items R and S.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Hey, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried. Announcements and presentations at this time. Mark Whitmore, Talaqua Fire Department, Assistant Fire Chief, twenty-five years. Officer Randy Jordan, Talaqua Police Department, fifteen years. And Officer Brian Stangland, Talaqua Police Department, fifteen years. Special Projects Director Ray Hammons for an update on the Anthe Spronan Expansion Project.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, double M fence has started building a fence around the north and west side of the property. Uh, they started on September twenty-second, uh, where it is they'll be done tomorrow. Uh, when that job was quoted, it was one water gap, but we, there's two more after we got in there and did a lot of cleaning and dozing, we found two more that we'd have to do. So there'll be a small change order there on that one. Hellus pulled on site, uh, October first, twenty-four, started clearing brush and trees, pushing up topsoil. Uh, they had to remove an old cistern from out in the middle, which uh, revealed some groundwater, uh, right in the middle of the property. And engineers are looking at a way to fix that. I think they've got a, a good idea on how to fix it, so uh, we're hopeful for that. Uh, Kevin Smith and Chief, Chief Baker helped facilitate a uh, location to haul the excess topsoil. Uh, just north of the training center is a open area where they can get in and easy. And uh, uh, Kevin uh, has graciously uh, said he would go ahead and put his dozer there and pile it up and keep it pushed up anyway. As, as, we'll, we'll be using it somewhere down the road. Uh, they're estimating roughly a thousand loads of spoils be taken away from the site. I don't know if it'll be that many, but they're looking at hiring local people to haul that as well. Uh, we are using the city's uh, trench burner today from solid waste to get rid of some of the organics out there. Got a big burn pile going. Uh, fire department is on site. That might be where Chief and Assistant Chief is right now, just making sure things are safe, going the way they're supposed to. Uh, the uh, soil density and moisture testing will start next week. Uh, we've made contacts with uh, uh, the engineers to start doing that. Uh, we're also working on a couple of directions to do possibly a bi-weekly, at least for now, uh, drone surveillance and take pictures of uh, of everything so we can, we can present back to you guys as uh, progress being made from, from the air. Uh, overall, very excited about the project. Uh, we're in good progress. Uh, Hellus is communicating, working well. It's uh, very difficult to accomplish without our team's advisors making this happen. Uh, Clay, Sonny, and Matt have been invaluable, uh, putting this together as far as knowing what we need and what goals there are. Uh, their experience is uh, is what I need to help give me direction on how to guide people. So uh, moving forward, their position would be huge in making this a success. So if you guys have any questions at all.
Could you explain further the change order?
Uh, there was not two, uh, two of the water gaps were not included in the bid because it was so brushy and built up. We could not see how many water gaps there would be or how big they would be. So one, one we knew we had, the two smaller ones we did not know we had. So we had a quoted with one, or I had one quoted with just the one water gap. The other two, as we built the fence, uh, it come to where, it's the only option we had, either that or change the path of the creek, and we can't do that.
I know that they're not here, but I may remember the conversation that we had with the representative that specifically he said that there was not going to be any change order.
This is, this is not Hellus, by the way. This is, this is not Hellus. This is us. The fence is on us. Let me make that clear. That doesn't have anything to do with Hellus. It only has to do with us because we, we took that upon ourselves. Basically, we're fencing out the neighbors livestock.
Yeah.
And putting the perimeter around our property. So it's not a Hellus project, it's a City of Talaqua project.
Well, then that makes total sense. We're okay now, right?
Yeah, right on, right on. Any questions? Thank you.
Moving on to regular session. Item A, discussion and possible action on items removed from the consent agenda. First, item R, enter into an agreement with MacLeod for consulting services related to the Anthe Spronan Sports Complex.
Uh, this is going to be basically uh, both R and S, uh, if there's some way um, on entering these consulting services, if there's way that we could document their activities, uh, just to be a good steward and be able to uh, physically as well as financially, uh, be able to document what we're receiving from these. Is there some way that we could do that at all?
Sure, uh, we can ask for the consultants to provide reports on a regular basis, uh, of their activities, and of course, we can present that to the council if needed.
Okay, well, that's, that, that was it. That was, and just making sure that, you know, we're at least being able to have some viable resource of what we can see, and that's it.
So much.
Thanks, Keith.
I would move to, to agree with both those. I'll agree with R, and we'll come back with that.
You want to go with that one?
Oh, we, can we do that third? If you do a motion to approve both of them. I, I make the motion to approve, uh, R and S.
Second.
Counselor Baker?
Uh, yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item six B, public hearing, closeout of zero zero one one nine dash CDBG dash twenty-two Small Cities Grant from the Oklahoma Department of Commerce, City Administrator Taylor Tannehill.
Thank you. Uh, so part of the closeout requirements for CDBG, CDBG projects is a public hearing, so uh, we are going to conduct that at this time. Uh, we're going to conduct the public hearing at this time. So uh, we use these funds uh, to supplement uh, construction costs on North Cedar uh, Street. Um, and as you uh, may, if you've driven over there, you can see the, the big change uh, within that project, uh, or within that um, uh, that area of town. Uh, so it was an open ditch, um, drainage system, no curbs, no guttering, uh, narrow, very narrow lanes. Um, and there was some grading, a lot of grading issues that we took care of. So CDBG uh, helped out uh, in a little over, or a little under $200,000 uh, to put towards that project. Um, so at this time, I'll leave it to the public if there's any public comments or council has any comments they'd like to make for the public hearing session. All right, we can move on.
Item C, discussion and possible action to accept, except with modifications or deny a completed street improvement project from, for a section of North Cedar Street from Allen Road to Crafton Street funded by the CDBG twenty-two Small Cities Fund officially closing out the project. City Administrator Taylor Tannehill.
Yeah, so another formality in the um, closeout portion of the grant, uh, this is to accept those improvements that were made uh, with the funding uh, of that project.
Motion to accept, second.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried. Regular session, item D, discussion and possible action to approve, approve with modifications or deny ordinance number thirteen seventy-seven, twenty twenty-four, an ordinance of the City of Talaqua, Oklahoma. Amending the Talaqua City Code, Part Seventeen Utilities, Part Seventeen dash five, Solid Waste Department Establishment and Collection and Disposal of Solid Waste by adding Section seventeen five eleven, intensive residential developments providing for codification, separability, repealer, and setting an effective date or declaring an emergency. Solid Waste Superintendent Chris Armstrong?
He is online.
Well, hello.
We can hear you, Chris.
Oh, hey, uh, was just a double check to see if there's any more questions, comments, concerns about the ordinance that we're trying to implement.
But could you just give a super brief description so that everybody's on the same page?
Uh, so what it, so what it's going to be is a uh, ordinance with the multi-dwelling, like if you have more than uh, two units, which are, or, or Taylor can probably correct this better than I, but um, more than two units in a single building. If there's three buildings, we're going to require them to have a dumpster instead of carts.
Thank you.
And uh, we do not recommend an emergency.
Motion to approve. Hold on a second.
Counselor Allen?
Hold on, this is the second reading, right?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Sweet.
Put that in the record.
Thank you, Chris. Regular session, item six E, first reading, discussion and possible action on ordinance number thirteen eighty-one, twenty twenty-four, an ordinance of the City of Talaqua, Oklahoma, amending the Talaqua City Code, Part Two, Administration and Government, Chapter Two dash four, General Provisions Related to City Officers and Employees by adding Section two dash four one three, emoluments of elected officials to, to provide for the emoluments of all elected officials, providing for codification, separability, repealer, and declaring an emergency. City Administrator Taylor Tannehill and Mayor Suzanne Myers.
Thank you. Uh, so as we do every four years, we set the salaries for elected officials, uh, and uh, they are presented within this ordinance. Uh, just uh, for clarification, uh, the next election cycle, cycle will include two counselors, uh, the city clerk, the city treasurer, street commissioner, and the chief of police. So this will effectively, the ordinance presented will effectively set the salary for those uh, upon their, uh, those positions upon um, their appointment uh, next May. Any questions?
Um, one, from a legality standpoint, when it comes to um, insurance and so forth, how that's going to affect, you know, if, if that's plausible. Um, and then two, if this does come to fruition. Um, and I haven't spoke to Danny about this, and when it comes to counselors, I think that we all need to act in unity. Um, and being, having two counselors paid more, even just for two years.
Sure.
Doesn't, doesn't sound right to me. If that's the case, if this is the way that, you know, we, we plan, uh, is there some way that we can hold off, you know, our payments? And I don't mean to speak for you, because, and this is just me, it's just, I think it's not fair, uh, for two counselors to get paid two more, you know, paid more than the other two counselors.
Right.
Um, that's one of the problems I have with it, but that's just something I, I had a kind of a question about.
Sure. Councilman, the, the state constitution, it's, it's often wrongfully said that the elected official's salary cannot be changed during that elected official's term. That is not correct. The state constitution says that elected official's salary is set by the law in effect at the time they take office. So if that law provides for an automatic pay increase in two years, three years, or whatever the case might be, that is lawful. So your, your salary and benefits can't change during your term, but the law that controls that salary benefits is locked at the time of election. So we could say, for example, eh, eh, the salary for all councilmen will be five dollars a day, starting one, one of, of twenty forty-seven. That's fine. If that happens to cause some councilmen to get a pay raise during their term, that's also fine because this law would take effect prior to their election.
Could you also say that if it were to be approved, that it wouldn't take effect until the two years pass and the others evolve at the same rate?
Yes.
Well, this is just the first reading. I just wanted to make sure we got that out there, if that's what you guys are thinking. I haven't spoken to anybody about this, so uh, that was the first part. But I wanted to kind of.
I also, uh, but this is the first reading, so it can be changed a little bit.
Sure.
For the second reading, because I think that there, and, and maybe I'm just not seeing it, but we have a couple of elected officials that actually oversee a department. And so if we're putting in a base salary for them, for now, that has to govern them for four years as they oversee the department, you know, provided the city keeps at the same rate that we are, and we continue to see, like, eight, nine, point three and five percent each year, um, then I think that there should also be some language in here that allows those officials to garner that same type of, uh.
Okay. Sure.
Additional, or.
That way, we're not kind of in the same position where we're at currently.
Right.
Where you've got some over the top of others, so.
And, and we did address that uh, to some degree um, in uh, section B, uh, subsection B.
Right.
Where um, uh, there is a longevity calculation, uh, and it's essentially the base pay that's within uh, the ordinance, um, multiplied by half of a percent, and then uh, multiplied by the number of years that they serve. Um, and so there's a incentive, um, and this can only, this can only come into effect as an elected official in that department. So for instance, um, I'll just use um, uh, Chief King as an example. The service that he uh, had as a police officer doesn't count towards, would not count towards that if he were elected again, only uh, as chief. Same with street commissioner, uh, that's another example. I would only count towards the years that he's served as street commissioner, uh, not as city administrator.
Another thing is from an, you know, you're walking kind of a tight rope, uh, so to say, when you're talking about a public official, and then, you know, at, at what point did that become employee status? And that's something I want to make sure that we stay away from, that, that, that they are a public official. And if there's some, some type of guidance that we need and that we really need to strictly adhere to, then we should do that, whether it be for insurance purposes or uh, something that I may not be currently thinking about. Uh, that's something that I, I do, you know, if they are an, I don't want to take away from their public official status by designating them as an employee, and they have to be here forty hours or whatever, because I'll be honest with you, I know uh, Chief King personally puts in a little bit more than forty uh, a week. So, but at the same time is that I want to make sure we don't get, you know, enter that atmosphere and have to worry about that later.
So to, to answer that question, pardon me for the, I'm, I'm about to give you a very uh, law school thesis, so apologize for that.
I want it.
Uh, all agents of, of a government are either classified as an officer or an employee. Officers have duration, powers, and tenure defined by law, whereas employees have duration, powers, and tenure defined by contract.
Okay.
So for example, the mayor is an officer. Her powers are defined by the code of ordinances. Her duties are defined by the code of ordinances. But someone working in the Waste Management Department, they're employed. Their duty is defined by their employment contract. So saying that a, a elected official, who is certainly an officer of the city, that they have to meet the benefits and requirements of a full-time city employee doesn't diminish their status as an official.
Well, you know, we'll just kind of talk about it. Hey, um, the increases, and, you know, it's something that we probably just need to kind of, you know, we need to make sure that we have apples to oranges, oranges to apples, or, or whatever, some type of reference base, that if we're going to make this increase, that um, we have something for it to be justifiable or, or have some type of basis. I know, Taylor, you have gotten me some information, and I wanted to make sure that the other counselors were able, we're going to be able to get that as well for us to, you know, to be able to determine whether this is justifiable or not.
Sure, uh, with the help of our HR director, we, we pulled some information and actually Marty helped out um, with this as well. So um, one of the things about doing comparisons, um, and just, just so everybody, um, you know, you could do it based on population, um, you can do it based on annual budgets, um, you can do it a number of different ways, is the point I'm making. And, and one of the uniquenesses of Talaqua is, of course, our form of government, our elected status of some of our department heads. And so uh, that makes it, I mean, I'll certainly provide the information that we can gather uh, the best that we can, but um, it's hard to say we're in an appropriate range when we're the, you know, the biggest municipality with an aldermanic form of government, and the next one is half the size of ours, you know? So that, it, it, that just kind of makes it difficult uh, to find that number. Um, and so you may have to look at one, you know, some of the positions in a different way than um, you would others within that. So just want to make that clarification, but certainly get that information out before the next meeting, uh, for you guys to, to dive into that. Feel free to reach out to other um, communities as well if you're not finding what you need uh, uh, from what we have.
Yeah, I'll add that the peer data for what you're asking is, it's really hard, um, you know, me being a, a risk manager, um, it's really hard to compare apples and apples with the way our government's set up. And so um, then you have to go based on, you know, your duties and obligations. And um, you know, for um, the little bit of data that I was able to pull with, uh, Malien, um, your duties, you know, way, are, are way further past um, your salaries. And so um, I'm, I was a proponent of this early on in the budget, and, and I think it needs to happen in some format.
Uh, Chief King, did you have any comments or thoughts, or, I mean, since we are, you are involved in this, at least that I have your, give you an opportunity if you want.
Well, I appreciate it, Counselor Baker. No, I've been involved um, from the get-go with this, had several meetings with Taylor um, in regard to this, and I think it, it landed in, in a fair place, both directions, you know? My position especially, or the chief of police is unique because you have a floor and a ceiling, and the officers are chasing me, but at the same time, your city administrator's just above me. So there's a, there's a kind of a finite window to, to fit that position into, and so I appreciate the work that's been done on that by our city administrator, Mayor and Marty, and Malien that have all worked on gathering data. So no, I'm, I think it's a, I think it's a fair proposal based on what I've seen. Malien that have all worked on gathering data, so no, I'm, I think it's a, I think it's a fair proposal based on what I've seen.
He said it's the first reading, so please communicate your concerns or any questions you have. Write them appropriately. Thank you.
Item six F, discussion and possible action to approve, approve with modifications or deny resolution number ten oh seven twenty twenty four A. A zoning change from RS two. Single-family medium density to RM three multi-family high density located at seven ten northeast avenue, Talakwa, Oklahoma. Planning and development director Paige Harjo.
Thank you, Whitney. Good evening, council. I have one item to present to you guys tonight. And that, just to give some background, the um applicant is helping crisis. Um, I have Ms. Laura here tonight representing. And she is currently in contract with the current property owner, John Townsend. And it is based contingent upon this zoning change tonight. So they are wanting to purchase the property located at seven ten northeast avenue. And the current zoning is RS two, single-family medium density. And they're wanting to upgrade that to RM three multi-family high density. To change that property into a multi, multifamily housing unit. And so I did provide a staff report in here for you guys. If you're following along, um, I did attach the zoning map, the comprehensive map, the Google map. Um, further down, the existing content, so our surrounding lane use. Um, to the north, the south and the east side of the property is currently zoned as RS two as well. To the west, though, is a multifamily high density RM three, which is what they're wanting to propose it to. Um, that property is the East Gate Apartments. And relationship with the comprehensive plan, so the proposed subdivision is located in the urban transitional neighborhood area. Um, that's according to the comprehensive plan that shows the map that I've included there. Uh, with that being said, it also, it states in there that with the, in the urban transitional neighborhood. Multifamily and single-family uses can be located directly next to each other. As long as the architectural character of the new project currently adequately reflects the character of the existing neighborhood. Um, with the relationship with the zoning ordinance, if the zoning change is approved, the owner will be required to meet all regulations. And the zoning ordinance and the proposed use would be allowed by right. And with the staff comments, I included that the subject property is within the. Urban transitional neighborhood area that is shown in the comprehensive plan map. Uh, it is defined as a mixed density area, which includes mixed use of residential housing, even some commercial. Therefore, making the subject property true to this statement. Uh, B, the subject property will be upgraded for needed safe and sanitary improvements. And will abide by our billing codes, the characteristics, characteristics of the exterior should remain the same. Uh, the subject property is surrounded by single-family zoning on the east, north and south sides, there is multifamily housing. Uh, directly across the street on the west. And the owner representative understands they will meet all the required city zoning ordinances. Uh, we had the planning commission meeting two weeks ago. And there were a group of about eight people who were in opposition of the zoning change. The concerns that were raised were regarding the decrease in property values, increase in higher taxes. Encroachment of multifamily housing in their single-family neighborhood. And also concern of who's going to maintain the property in the future. Um, are all valid concerns. We did talk about those between uh staff, board and the petitioner. Um, after the discussion, there was a recommendation four to nothing for all. Or for the planning commission, they all voted to go ahead and proceed with the zoning change. And the staff also recommends the approval of case number six twenty twenty four zoning. And changing the reference property zoning from RS two to RM three. Any questions for me?
Had any uh.
Opposition.
Or issues, are they here tonight at all, or did they want to say anything or?
I don't recognize any of them here.
Um, I also did ask you a question in private, and I want to make sure that they do know that you are, that they are not changing any of the. Physical attributes of the house that's already there.
Correct.
It will stay the same.
Yes, as far as I know, yep.
At least at this, at this time, that's the physical plan.
Mm-hmm.
My correct or? Okay.
Any other questions from the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Counselor Hires.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item six G, discussion and possible action to approve, approve with modifications or deny the quote from Oklahoma Roofing. And Sheet Metal LLC for the senior citizens roofing project. City Administrator Taylor Tannehill.
Thank you. Okay, so we've, we've come a long way with this project. Um, gone out to competitive bid, uh, didn't receive uh any qualified quotes there, and so uh we went a new route and contacted. Um, the uh state purchasing agency and asked about what uh the state uh roofing contracts, what they look like, and so. Uh, Oklahoma Roofing and Sheet Metal uh has that contract within our district. Um, and they've provided us a quote of a hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty-three cents. Um, that is uh quite a bit more than uh really what we were anticipating throughout this whole process. Uh, but we do have funds available. Um, and just, just so uh council, you're aware, what we have budgeted. Uh, within the capital improvements line items uh for management and maintenance. Um, is ninety thousand dollars for the senior citizens building. And then we have another fifty thousand in HVAC repairs, so we'll, we'll have to take a portion of the HVAC repairs. Uh, to cover the cost of this, uh, and speaking with Mark this afternoon. Um, uh, he's, he's totally fine with that, completely fine with it, um, and recommends proceeding with the roof. Um, just anecdotally, um, he's, he's really been working on trying to get a roof for the building for about ten years, and so. Um, it needs it, uh, it's an asset that we need to preserve and um it is, it is expensive. Uh, but it is something that needs to be done, it's recommended for approval.
Motion to approve. One second.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Hires.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you all. Item six H, discussion and possible action to enter into an agreement with Kelly Engineering. To perform onsite engineering services and authorize the street department to purchase material, provide labor. And contract for labor if necessary for the White Avenue project. Counselor Keith Baker.
Uh, I'm going to go ahead and defer this to you, uh, Taylor, as well as uh. Mr. Smith, Kevin. Okay, I can't see, uh, just we had any questions that, you know, if anybody can we refer back to.
Sure.
I'll just speak briefly and then I'll, I'll throw it to Kevin uh for any clarification, so. Um, Kelly Engineering, uh, they were the engineers on the original project that was uh designed, I think, back in twenty twelve. Um, if you guys recall, we had asked them to redesign the project uh about a year ago. Turned out that wasn't going to happen, so we went back to the drawing board and asked if they can provide uh engineering uh onsite services. Uh, to provide during construction and uh then we reached out to the street commissioner. To see if we could do this project in-house, and so you have a uh proposal from Kelly Engineering. It does include uh drainage design and uh construction oversight. Uh, on the property we own at the bottom of the hill on White Avenue, so that's going to be a part of this project as well. But the total cost of the engineering services, just so you're not confused with everything that's within this proposal. Is about eighty-two thou, or is eighty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. Um, and that is roughly the cost of what he was charging us to redo the plans uh about a year ago. Um, I'm not going to speak too long on the, the cost estimate, uh, because I think Kevin's prepared uh. Some information to clarify what the actual cost is. Uh, for your information, we do have uh five hundred thousand dollars budgeted in our street and sidewalk fund for this project. And I think uh even the projected cost estimates, we're going to be well within what we have budgeted, so.
Mr. Smith.
When we discussed it here, that. And basically for White Avenue, we'll know it's going to be a very tight working environment up there, so. There's about two-thirds of people probably very mad at us because we're going to be in their backyards, not literally in backyard, you know, right on the street, one lane. So uh, I think there was about uh. What, six hundred, I'm looking at Jim, he's, he's part of the engineering, he's clear, about six, seven hundred foot of of drainage pipe through there, so. We're way underneath the, the cost of anything there. Uh, the first thing we do, once we take off here, we're going to have to locate utilities and and we'll have to basically dig some potholes out where the utilities are at. Some of our concerns are some of the sewer lines there, are we going to be able to get a box under them, we're going to build a box through them, whatever it may be, so that's. That's why it's going to be crucial to have engineer that we can get our hands on at that point in time. And just so everybody knows there that, that no matter what you do, you're not going to take care of every bit of that water going to the back, in those backyards. You can capture the very most you can, but you still got a lot of water running behind those houses, it's not even going to get to the, the front side of the streets. So um.
That's just an elevation problem, and I understand that.
Yeah, it's just the way it's going to go and we can't, we can't change it there, but. So, and that's kind of why we, you know, asked Heather, said this is where, this is the avenue we want to go. Where everybody's on the same page, what we, we can do, force accounting, in-house work, and if we need to go out for some assistance. You know, like some uh specially informed building, some boxes, whatever it may be, then we could go out and stay within. Budget before our, our ordinance as far as our purchasing guidelines, stuff like that. Uh, we've got, I think they come up with a. Fairly lengthy plan as far as from the, from the start time to finish time, um, like get in, get out as quick as we can, because once it starts raining, we're going to be. You know. That's going to be depending what's happening down there, so. But that being said, just fix what you guys decide to do, you know.
The cost estimate I saw was like eight hundred?
It was um six, the, the actual construction cost estimate was six hundred and six thousand. With a twenty percent contingency, so five oh five and a hundred and one in contingencies with a, for a total of six oh six, six hundred and six thousand, two hundred and five dollars.
But you think you can.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I do, but like I said, we're not going to go, you know. The, this, so we all understand that, that you could take a mistake like uh. You know, a construction company, they're going to get in there, they're going to work ten, twelve hours a day. You know, our guys is working seven hours a day. There's no incentive for them to get in there and just get it done because they, they get paid. You know, that's just the way it goes, that's why, but. I've talked to Mike Kelly, talked to Jim Lindsay, uh. And uh, like I said, the, the timelines they've got on there is well within our grasp, I mean, so.
But this is something that these people could actually have. Done that's been needed for a very long time, my correct?
Well, like I said, he's got.
Take everything out.
He's got starting in, in January, which I like to start quicker because we've also got a. Bridge box that we're going to go out and bid on hopefully this week or whatever there, so we need to do demolition on that also, so I'd like to get in and get out. I mean, I'd like to get the bottom part dug out, start going up the hill, you know, in the higher grounds or so.
And I do have one question with the additional services of the pond down below. That is going to help some of these people from, from future flooding.
Sure it will.
Okay.
Sure. Because, you know, what it, the restrictions, what's going to happen over there off of uh. Off of uh, uh, when you, when you go underneath that bridge box, you get over to where the trade courts is, it gets choked down right there, so that's going to create a. A ponding effect there to work and back up, it's going to help. It's going to help with the flooding farther to the east, right in there. If that makes sense, if you're over on, what road is that?
Park Hill Road.
Park Hill Road, right there in that corner, it'll, it'll help tremendously right there. Because that, that drainage ditch goes right through two or three sewer lines. And it always just collects trees and stuff like that, and that's where it starts just flooding that road out right there.
More questions for Mr. Smith?
Well, I would like to state that, you know, I would appreciate if the council would, but this has already been budgeted. For us to do, uh, we have just made it to where it is physically as well as financially viable. Uh, to do to help these people. And I could only ask that, you know, you could see in her wisdom that we could help these people that has been. A, they have been incredibly patient, uh, if not to say ten years waiting on the land uh for us to. Be able to help them uh with some of their problems.
Mr. Baker, is that in the form of a motion?
I would make that a motion if at all possible. Well, I do have a question.
Well, I guess my question is, what are we, what are we voting? If it's a budgeted item. Comes into where the budget is. What, what are we?
So, yeah, it's the, it's. Right.
And and basically, once you trigger that there, then that's, then that's where, then we're going all in with our workforce and and we're doing, you know, in-house. You know, so that way, you guys know we're going to be there for a few months, it's not.
It's not going to be something that's going to be overnight.
Right.
But it's getting, getting the actual work done.
Exactly.
For these people.
We will go door to door notifying the people of what's to come, Mr. Baker, correct?
Yeah, yes, I'm sure, I'm sure. In fact, I'm probably going to send a few email, a few texts saying that, that we got this done if at all possible tonight.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Hires.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Thank you. Item six I, discussion and possible action to approve waiving business fees including but not limited to occupational licenses and alcohol licenses. Fees for businesses located along South Muskogee Avenue within the construction area for the South Muskogee. Improvements project. City Administrator Taylor Tannehill, Mayor Suzanne Myers.
Uh, so the mayor and I, uh, we received a few phone calls from some of the businesses. Um, and uh, you know, really, truthfully, there's not a whole lot the city can do during uh a construction project of this magnitude. Uh, what we can do um with the direction of our city attorney. Is waive some of the fees that are required for businesses to operate, and so those fees are the occupational uh. Licenses that we issue, the alcohol uh licenses that we issue, and the marijuana licenses that we issue. Uh, and so what I've done is I've provided a map uh to show the area to consider, this can obviously. Be uh changed at the direction of the council, but this is the, the map that we felt was uh the most impactful on the businesses in the area. Um, for reference, um, our occupational license is fifty dollars. Are, uh, depending on what type of uh alcohol uh license that you or business you operate, it's between uh four hundred and fifty to nine hundred dollars. And uh. For the marijuana licenses, I believe it's five hundred dollars a piece, and that, those are all dispensaries within that area, so. Um, there's a roughly seventy-five businesses, uh, these are approximate numbers, but it would be. Uh, a total amount of eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Our uh marijuana licenses and alcohol licenses expired on September thirtieth. And so there's a renewal coming up and and it's due now. Um, and so this, this, that part of the decision um is critical uh to have some direction. Uh, but the occupational licenses don't go, uh, we don't ask for those until after January first. So it'd be waiving next year's li, occupational licenses and then waiving this year's. Uh, alcohol and marijuana until next uh October first.
And I would just comment that while the. Project is going very well and moving quite. Speedily through that, through the area, it is an inconvenience for those merchants and those businesses, just trying to be empathetic. Um, and keep their best interest in mind, and in the big scheme of things, this is very small, but I think the gesture on your part would go a very long way. And questions from the council?
Mr. Man.
Only thing I would request is a durational limit on how long it's to last.
What is the, the period that we foresee the construction lasting?
Uh, we are hoping by next spring, it's wrapped up. Sometime around uh the end of March, April, that's the.
So June, June, our fiscal year. So June, June, our fiscal year.
But I would say for keeping purposes and for the permit issuances, it would be for one year. They would be waived from October first through September thirtieth and then January first through, or is it January?
January first to, yeah, December.
First of December.
For next year.
But they've also been convenience a little bit more than that.
Yeah.
With those changes, I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you all. Item six J, discussion and possible action to adopt the City of Talawa homelessness strategic plan. City Councilor Ward Force Josh Allen, City Administrator Taylor Tannehill.
Yeah, so this, after speaking with the city attorney, there's some language that we want to modify before we bring this and adopt this plan. So no action at this time.
Item K, discussion and possible action on establishing a regional planning commission. City Administrator Taylor Tannehill.
Thank you. So didn't have a whole lot in the packet regarding this agenda item, but back in March, we had a discussion of administration looking into working with the county on developing a planning commission that would suit the needs of the, the county residents as well as city residents. After speaking with the county officials, they're not really interested in developing a planning commission that includes zoning regulations within the county. And so I kind of, I just wanted to bring this back to kind of bring it full, full circle for you guys, give you guys an update on that. But also let you know, you know, during that meeting, we talked about two different things, maybe three different things. But the two main things was the Metropolitan Planning Commission, which is the full service planning commission with planning activities and zoning. That was, that requires the consent of county officials to proceed with that. The other type of planning commission that we discussed was a regional planning commission. And the regional planning commission can operate outside the city limits, up to a three mile radius. It doesn't have to be a three mile radius. But it can be, it can be a one mile radius for that matter. And so the limits, it is limited to their duties and their responsibilities. And that is it's only situated to allow for planning activities. And planning activities generally would include subdivision development and, but no zoning. So just keep that in mind. It doesn't, and for what it's worth here, if somebody buys a piece of property and starts subdividing, there's, there's no notice requirement to a neighbor. And so a zoning change, it requires that notice to a neighbor. Just want to make that clear. But the reason why this is on the agenda, again, to kind of circle back around to it, but also get some input from, from this group to, to see if we want to pursue forming a regional planning commission. The, the membership of that group is our current, it would be our current planning commission members. The mayor would be an ex officio member, the county, county commissioner chairman is an ex officio member, and then their engineer is an ex officio member and our engineer is an ex officio member. They don't count towards a quorum. They would count towards a vote, I believe. So I'm, oh, I think maybe JT, you might have some comments to make on this or if you don't, that's fine. So are there any questions for you guys? For me, we can certainly present this at our next planning commission meeting and just see where it goes as far as where those boundaries look, what they look like. I think the county would probably need to develop some sort of rules for their subdivisions. Or we need to modify ours to include county developments.
So, so Taylor, the benefits of having, because they don't want to go the route, you know, they've, they've said they don't want to go the first route. What, what kind of oversight would that give us? Like, I mean, what, what do you foresee? What benefits going down this road? If, if, you know, they don't, we don't, because you just said with things that they don't notify neighbors.
Yeah.
So what's, so what's the purpose?
So the major benefit is that as lands get subdivided and they make improvements, they are required to meet a certain standard. So there's a lot of, there's a few developments that are out, just outside of our city limits that may have a two inch water line serving that neighborhood. That is not adequate to account for fire suppression, number one, or even serve, you know, the residents there. Additionally, you know, street standards, they're, you know, I, I don't know exactly what the county requires at the moment. But there would be certain street standards that would be required that as the city, if the city were to annex them in, we wouldn't be taking in substandard roads. So there's those benefits. It's, it's a protection of those property owners that end up buying those properties at a future date. And it's also, it's a planning, you know, mechanism for, you know, fire service, emergency management, you know, all that. So.
Would it give us any, is there any benefits in us being able to modify businesses or sway businesses from coming in that might adversely affect, you know, something were to be built close to city limits? It wouldn't change that at all?
No.
Okay.
No, not unless they subdivided the property. But the use, the use would not.
Subdivisions.
Correct.
Divisions only.
Correct.
Residential.
Yep.
So we wouldn't be.
Well, it could be, it could be commercial too, if they were subdividing the property. So for instance, you know, let's just say Highway fifty-one, forty acre tract. They've got X number of feet along Highway fifty-one. They start splitting those up and all of a sudden you've got driveways coming off fifty-one until you can't even see. And so that could help alleviate that problem in the future of not, you know, having a bunch of people backing out on Highway fifty-one. Or, you know, whatever the case is.
I don't want to, but I would like to have some, you know, at least have the commission look at this and see if they, they would like to, to do this. One, I, I, I have a problem with it being three miles. I think that's a little too far. I think we should kind of take it down to maybe a mile or at least get their recommendation, see how far we should go out. See if this is something that they're willing to take on as well, before we just go ahead and do it. What's your guys' thoughts on that?
Who enforces this? I mean, it's not in the city limits.
The city, the city would have enforcement powers.
Because I don't want to infringe on, on people who live in the county because they want to live in the county. But at the same time is when they do have city services and there are.
Does it open them up to city services though?
So let me try to, I, I think this is the best mind frame in which to view a regional planning commission. That regional district, the, if you imagine a donut with, with a hole in the middle, the hole would be the City of Talawa and the donut would be the, the regional planning district. The idea is for the properties within that regional district to, in theory, one day be in part be annexed in. And these, these minimal regulations would be designed to prepare them so that when they are annexed in, the city's not taking over roads that are substandard, taking over water lines that are substandard and the like. We could not regulate in any way, shape or form, property use. So if a person wants to put a chicken house next to a daycare, we can't stop that. We would say that if you're going to subdivide that land, the road must be built to such and such standard, the pipes must be built to such and such standard, but that would be it. There's no build, there's no building permits in the sense of I want to build this chicken coop there. You don't come to us for a permit to do that.
But, so you, you mentioned something I want to make sure I clarify. To be annexed in that process, that's just not something we can just decide to do.
Right.
They have to, they have to initiate that process.
Correct.
So we're not doing this so that we can take over property.
That, that's exactly correct. That's exactly correct.
Make sure that's very clear.
But traditionally, the, the way in which cities have developed in Oklahoma is that as they, the, the, the properties on the peripheral of a city limits begin to develop, people begin to want those municipal services. They want police and fire protection. They want solid waste services. We can't do that unless they annex in, so they tend to annex in. But if they have been built by, with substandard or beyond, beneath city standards, we are annexing in a giant problem. Because we suddenly have a substandard road that the street department wants to spend years fixing.
Who enforces and what is, what does that enforcement look like? So you're outside of the city limits. We can tell them, hey, this is against our planning commission. But then they look at us and say, well, we're outside of the city limits. So then does Nate, do we have to?
So.
A city lawsuit?
So in the case of a subdivision, the county clerk cannot record that subdivision plat without the, without the stamp of the regional planning commission. And if you try to subdivide without the planning commission's approval, that's a misdemeanor in, in district court.
And you said that the, the county, did they have, Taylor, did they have, you talked about this formation of something like this. Have you started the talks on this?
No, I, so the discussion that I had with them was more specifically about the Metropolitan Planning Commission and that, the, kind of the, all of the services. Did not have a conversation with them about the regional planning commission, and frankly, because they're, they don't play much of a role in developing this.
Do they, but they have to sign off on it?
They don't.
They don't have to sign.
Yeah.
This is a. I don't want to say dumb question because I don't think questions are renewed them, but there are no dumb questions, but this is. So the city looks different. It's not just like a circle.
Sure.
And then you say a mile. So is it a mile from like a certain point? Or is it like you go to the very tip of the south ridge and it's a mile from that or three miles from that and then you go?
It's, it's one mile from the current municipal limits. Or it's up to three miles. You, but you could, you could configure it any, any way you would want if it's within the three mile radius. So going out west of town, or east of town, sorry, toward the river, you know, you could, you know, that's not three miles out there. I don't think it is anyway. You could say, you know, the center line of the Illinois River is our eastern boundary. Going west, you could say all, all, all three, three miles. It would encompass the donut holes that we see in our city limits.
Three miles from my house.
It's first bar.
Well past the Cherokee Nation.
Sure.
I mean, but then I'm looking at the river here and three miles from the corner. You know, that side of town, if you have been that area, I mean.
Sure.
Is there any way we could send this back to the, you know, our planning commission and kind of get their thoughts as to a boundary and so forth and kind of?
Yeah, they, they haven't, they haven't had a discussion about this yet. Wanted to get some direction from you guys before presenting it to them. They, they are aware of a regional planning commission. They've had some training on that. But I just wanted to get some.
It would also give additional time for anybody that might have problems with it that are outside of the city limits. And that's the reason why, if they have a problem, I would want to hear what they have to say as well.
I don't want to, I'm not interested in, you know, doing something that looks like we're trying to overstep the bound or, you know, take away the rights of people that are living in the county.
Yeah.
I would want to make, make sure we really slow walk this and give everybody an opportunity to talk, including the county commissioners.
Right.
To, to get their advice, because I, I'd want all of us to be in agreement on this.
Yeah, and, and, and to be clear, you know, this agenda item was just more of making council aware of discussions we've had, but also talking a little bit more about the, the, basically one option that we have now without the county's participation. And so.
Well, I, I mean, this is definitely, I, I believe the conversation that we should, we need to have.
Yeah, we do need to have it.
You can look at Talawa and the way it's growing and see that it's not necessarily always growing cohesively, especially right outside the city limits. And then we are kind of, as those either donuts get brought, we either work around it or they get brought in other ways or housing conditions get brought in that, you know, are not this.
City standards.
So, I mean, I definitely think this is a conversation, this is a good beginning to a conversation. I also just have to wrap my head around it.
I also, you know, think that it, it could, with everybody on board, that it could help us, you know, if you look at like south of town, kind of the, all the issues we have with roads and, you know, with so many stoplights. A lot of people have always wondered, you know, I wish we would have had some more, a long time ago, had some better forward thinking about how to develop that area. I think that could also help as Talawa keeps expanding as long as everybody's on board. We don't want to, we don't want to create an issue.
Right.
So there's pros and cons.
You bet.
It sounds like an appropriate motion might be to submit this to the planning commission for further recommendation.
That way, once we get the fair response, also give time, if the, if anybody that may have problems with this, they can come forward.
Yeah, so move.
I'll second that.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item six L, discussion and possible action on authorizing the creation of a committee to develop a plan for the future capital projects for the City of Talawa. City Administrator Taylor Tannehill, Mayor Suzanne Myers.
So as you all know, the capital, the bond and the tax expires in twenty-eight, twenty twenty-eight. And in looking ahead and planning for the future, that's, my term is over in twenty-seven. And so Taylor and I have met on a couple of occasions and talked about how do we plan for success and to educate our public and to get everything into a package that would best serve our citizens. And so we would like to ask consideration for you all to give approval to start putting together a committee that would begin to look at the bond, bond and tax issues for a vote possibly as early as twenty twenty-six, which would not go into effect until this, if it were to pass, would not go into effect until this one were to expire. But certainly puts the citizens in a position to have a chance to have a say and to give direction to the group and to let us move forward with plans for our community and our city.
And I think it also kind of gives them a, a prospectus as to what, what we foresee to be those capital improvements that we need to make for, for them to vote on or.
You could also, counselor gives them a chance to tell us what they think those ideas are and, and yours as well. But part of this process is to get the opinions of the community members. And so asking you for your guidance and your input on how those committee members would be selected to chair this. And then as Taylor and the others move forward and myself, then we'll of course be coming back to you with reports. And you may want to be on this. I don't know. I don't, that would not be inappropriate if you did, would it? It would be fine.
I think this would be a good way to utilize, you know, prominent businesses or, you know, establishments or even, even schools for that matter, that, that, that might be able to, we might be able to at least gauge what they foresee for us to get some type of interaction with them. So what were you guys thinking as to some of these participants? I mean, is that something that we can discuss or?
Yeah, so that's why we brought it to you guys is we wanted, we wanted you guys to have a, one of the council members to have a input on the formation of this group. You know, it could be an appointment by each member or yourselves, if you'd like to participate directly. But we're looking at probably no more than five to seven individuals. That, that, that have a collection of, of experience and expertise, obvious, you know, residents of Talawa or at least the county, that can provide some guidance on putting a, a, a bond package together. So currently, you know, the mayor's speaking about our current bond. It expires in twenty twenty-eight. It's three quarters of a cent. That generates quite a bit of money. Currently, you know, or our current bond, we've had a lot of road projects. We're hoping that we don't have to put so many road projects on the next package of, of bond issues because we have our street and sidewalk tax, that we're hoping to, to keep that going as well. So, you know, we'd be looking at, you know, public improvements in the form of facilities, you know, quality of life improvements, that type of thing with this next, next go around. For, for what it's worth. For, for what it's worth, it does generate about three million dollars a year in revenue. And obviously that revenue has to be spent directly on the bond.
And this is more of a question as well as to you, mayor. Getting entities like say the Teleport Public Works or say the Gas Authority.
Yep.
Getting them involved, would that be an idea or to throw around? I mean, I know you're talking about five people, but some of these people that are so, us building, if we're going to do these cap, making sure that they are involved, if they have any knowledge that we, we might need to.
Maybe that this group of five to seven gets subcommittees, you know, and you have someone that's utilities and you have someone that's public schools. And I mean, we're wide open to this, so I'm not poo-pooing anything you're saying.
I, I, and I think, and I think utilities need to be in the conversation on this next, next bond package. So somebody from Public Works as a representative would be a fantastic idea to be on, on this group.
Could I, could I also recommend, and I don't, I don't know what you guys think about this, but I think it'd be wonderful with this bond package, which would last for years, would you give us vision for years? As if, you know, I know that we're, the four counselors are selected by each of our wards.
Right.
I, I think it would be, I, I know for myself, if, if, if I were involved in the process, I would want to like, you know, hold a meeting at Vidalia's or somewhere else. I don't know if I want to give Danny the business, but just kidding. But, you know, have a committee meeting so that whatever, you know, so that every ward is represented. So it's not just represented in one ward. It's so, I, I would, I would love to create something to where the, the residents feel like they are involved in this process and it's not just a few business leaders or the people that are on utilities board or whatever. But, but I, so my suggestion would be, and I don't, I don't want to speak for the other counselors. It would be wonderful if, if we could be involved and that we would be responsible to get our constituents involved in the process. And I, I would not mind doing that for my ward, just to say, hey, if you have something that needs to be done, we want to include this in the package. We want your support so that we continue to help Talawa. Because I think that's our role as a city councilor is to, is to communicate with our wards.
I'm just going to give Councilman Perry a pat on the back publicly. He's having a, a ward meeting in November where he's invited or is inviting, I don't know if you've sent those out yet, his, his people to come in and get the pulse.
Yeah.
And so I would encourage each of you to do that at some point. I, I hope it works out well for you.
Yeah. Fingers crossed.
I mean, I think that this is, I, I think that as this planning happens, it has to be community forward and it has to be representative of our community and where we want our community to be both now and in the future. And so I think that it, 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 if you're looking at just like the technical pieces to say, hey, we need a committee of five to seven to help us manage the technical pieces, like how does the language need to appear? How does, you know, what are we talking about as far as money? Who can crunch the numbers to say over this many years, you know, we're going to have this much money. And so this is the amount that we ultimately can have in projects, then that's one thing, which is kind of what I think I hear Taylor maybe saying, but then I think others are kind of going, hey, let's start, you know, putting the, the pieces in place to spend the money on X, Y, Z. And I think if we're, when we get to the point to put the pieces in place on X, Y, Z, I mean, that needs to be a much, much larger community talk. And it, I go back to the comprehensive plan that we talked tonight, you know, when we started that, we did, you know, tons of community meetings and it was like, come and put a sticky note on, you know, where you want here and what you think it should be. And if you could dream big, how, and I, I think those are community conversations that we need to have. And maybe it's bringing in somebody that can help us facilitate those conversations. I mean, maybe that's what, you know, we, and, and starting now, I think we could do that. But I think that it has to be, I mean, community, but we're all not going to be in these positions. You know, some of us maybe not long and some of us, I don't know, Marty might be here forever, you know?
So I think you're, you're, you're saying the things we hope to hear.
I just want the conversation to know, like tonight, if you're wanting us to vote on something, what are you wanting us to vote on? Are you wanting us to, you know, kind of start that very technical group that this is what they're going to be doing? Or are you wanting to expand it to, you know?
So
Start bringing everybody on.
Yeah, so my, my thoughts on this group is, this group is that, that leading group to put together those, maybe not put together those community events, but invite the public to come to their meetings. I mean, I, I wrote down two things and it was the member number and that these are, that anytime this, these group, this group meets, it's open to the public. Those are like the two qualifiers and I'm sure there's more, but the group is more of a steering committee, you know, than anything to recommend to city council, okay, we need to bring a consultant in to, to gather, you know, information. Or, you know, I, I wanted that group to be community minded or community representative that they have the ability to reach out to other community, community members and invite them to their meetings to ask what is needed and then propose what we think, you know, city officials need, need, what Public Works may need. And so it comes from all community spiritedness, I guess. And it's not just me or the mayor saying this, we know this is what we need. You know, it's a collection of community and staff, and these people are the middle, middle folks to bring everybody together and make a recommendation to you guys of the improvements to be requested.
Well, if we're going to have one, one person from each, each ward, I also think the mayor needs to have a representative as well. And making sure that our city's involved, I know they're leaving right now, but
Perfect timing.
Yeah, as they walk, having, at least having, you know, so our code enforcement kind of, you know, just kind of have just to be there, just may not necessarily be developed, but just have, have, have an idea of what, what we're thinking about. But asking some of our major employers, you know, they might have an idea of what they might need. Cause I know the South is growing like nobody's business.
Well, but we
And you're in the South now too.
Oh, I know, I know.
I'd also like to know what the guy in the coffee shop thinks, who, you know, who
I mean.
May not be a business owner, but.
I mean, outside of that, I mean, this is the future. I mean, why wouldn't we be in the high school, the middle school, the elementary? I mean, what do you want your community to look like? And this is our opportunity, how can we make this happen? How can we, you know, flesh out these ideas? But I think that is a larger conversation and not what you're looking for now. I mean, I think what you're looking for now is
Permission.
People that, you know, can spearhead this and run to, you know, start having those conversations.
Right.
Within the wards, within the school, within the, you know, the
I think those five people, whoever, we probably need to reach out to one, the community, you know, employers in, within the community and just residents and just try to get all those information. Cause I mean, there might be some things that we haven't thought of and getting everybody involved. At least being able to be heard, something that we need to take to, you know, I understand that we need five people or whoever or how many we ever decide, but making sure that we go out to each, you know, at least try to get involved enough throughout the community so that we have good idea.
Yep. That, that would be the goal that this group would be charged with, you know, reaching out to the HOAs, reaching out to the business owners and saying, hey, we're having a meeting tonight about city improvements, be, you know, be there, agendas.
So we have to just start with step one and step one.
Yes, we want. We need to, we need to know if you guys want to appoint those people? Do you want to authorize the mayor to appoint those people? I mean, that's, that's really what it is. And it's really, you know, you know, buy-in from, from you to move forward.
And see, Josh, this is with you, with, with being on TD, TRDA, you know, they have, you know, they'll have somebody that, you know, an, an idea of what's going on and they'll have some involvement through you. So that's, you know, that's kind of a slipper, you know, I wouldn't say slippery slope, but if you were involved, you know, that would put, you know, one person with two stones and more, you know?
Well, I, I just
Or whatever you want to call it.
Make sure that as we create this for the mayor, mayor, I, I want to make sure that as we create it, that we create something that can happen efficiently. Right? And we don't want to bog it down. And so I, I trust your and Taylor judgment
Thank you.
On how to make that efficient.
And inclusive.
Yes, and I, I just would say, we want to make sure that, that yes, that I, I want to just make sure that all, I mean, I, I don't need to appoint someone, but as long as we just get equal representation throughout Talawa, and I know that you're really good with that. And so I, I trust you and we'll let you know.
I think, to be honest, I think each of us should appoint one as well as the mayor. That would give us five. And that way we'd have at least some basis, but that's just, that's just my thought. What, what is, what is your thoughts? I mean, how, how would, how do you plan on thinking about, or how did you?
I didn't really have a particular thought. Again, it was five to seven members and the people have their meetings in open public.
But mayor, what's your, your thoughts?
I, I remember when we had the open forum and we had people come in here and they gave us 10 ideas and you all implemented eight of those ideas within a short period of time. And that's just to me, the responsiveness of our community, when you put it out there, you know, we're listening. And so I feel like we will get input and we have a, a community full of citizens that care and that are smart and that live the day-to-day life in our community. And they can tell us if public transportation is important or if, you know, a new water fountain downtown at the Norse Park. You know, what is it that they want? So I, I don't have, I mean, this was not a brainstorming session with Taylor and I, but we often spend times thinking about the future because I think that's part of what our role is. And we can't wait till the last minute and you guys know that I'm not in favor of dragging things out nor letting grass go under our feet. So we're ready. If you'll give the nod or if you want, you all decide among yourselves, I don't want to vote. I don't want this to be the one vote I've had since I've been elected. You all decide.
And, and wouldn't, if, if you want to appoint people, we're not asking you to, to pick those people right now. You know, we just want to know, if that's the direction, we want you to, you know, put your thing in cap on and start thinking about those people.
I'm, I'm just going to say, I totally trust you guys to put this group together. I don't need to appoint someone. I, because I don't.
That's a form of emotion.
Yes.
So I, I
Let me see if I can, go ahead.
I'd like to be able to point out.
What, is that a motion?
I'm just letting him know that.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying. I'm going to make a motion now.
Give you my opinion, you tell me that you want five names or 10 names, I'll give them to you.
Yeah.
But I don't necessarily have to be, in my opinion, I don't have to say this is I mean, but I would hope that if I did come to you and said, I really would like this person on there, that that name shows up on the committee. And if not, then we can vote at that point.
I mean, I think we should make recommendations to you and Taylor. And then you take those recommendations and maybe sift through those because some people are going to say yes and some people are going to say no.
And some people may not know, you have the timeframe that you need.
Yeah.
Let me, let me try this if I can propose an emotion. Okay. I, 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 I think the tenor of the conversation has been this, a motion to establish a capital improvement plan, steering committee composed of five members appointed by the mayor, one from each ward of the city and one at large with all meetings of the CIP steering committee, subject to the Open Meeting Act.
Can we amend that to five to seven members?
Yes. That's what I thought I heard.
So move, second it.
Counselor Allen. Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Oh, yes.
Counselor Hires.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Sometimes the good things are the hardest.
Yes.
Item M, discussion and possible action on expenditure of the opioid settlement funds. City Administrator Taylor Tannehill.
Thank you. So I didn't have a whole lot in the packet on this item because we just had our first meeting today at two o'clock. But I want to give a quick update on that discussion. And this may be, I wouldn't say a recurring item, but as we start spending funds, we'll, we'll certainly let you guys know. So some of the things that we talked about, and before I get into that, I guess I need to speak about the, the amount of, of dollars. So there's a lump sum, initial lump sum of just under $400,000 that we'll be receiving here shortly. There's a whole list of things that we can spend that money on. And then for the next few years after that, we'll receive about $82,000 annually. Fifteen years. So some of the things that we had a discussion about was incentivizing the prescription take back event. I'm sorry, that's, we met with the hospital authority and the county and Chief King, he's no longer here, but and then the mayor and I, we were also present at that meeting. So just a couple of things, nothing set in stone. It was really our first kind of get together, but incentivizing prescription take back days. So right now I think everybody's kind of aware of those, but it's a, it is free to the public as it is, but encouraging more people to get out and do that. So in the form of a gift card or something like that, those, these funds can be used for that purpose. And that's literally just taking those drugs that do affect lives out of the cabinets of all of our homes and off the street in some cases, as, as they can make it their way out there. Media campaigns is one, peer recovery, support groups. Training's a big item within this packet of the use of funds and it's training for physicians, training for police personnel, emergency responders. Something that Chief King had mentioned is a development of a municipal drug court. So currently with the decriminalization of some of, of our, our drugs here the last few years by the legislature. A lot of the court cases that were going to district court are now finding their way into municipal court and having a system to help out those situations. Education for parents with, for their kids that may have, get a prescription for a torn ACL or something like that. And just having that education piece to give out, whether it's a pamphlet or, or whatnot. And so the other part was also how do we partner with the groups that are already doing a, a good job at, at, at addressing this issue? And so we'll be taking a look at all that. We will be meeting again November fourth to take, maybe get a more formal thought together. But those are the items that we're, we're currently exploring in our brainstorming session. This is an actionable item, which was brought up in the committee. And so one of the uses of the funds that I, I believe we can use the funds for is our portion that is a, a part of the contract for the crisis shelter with the Cherokee Nation out of ARPA, it's $170,000. This, these funds can be used for that. And so the recommendation is to use these funds for that purpose, freeing up a little bit of the ARPA fund and then coming back with, with that use in the future.
And, and I was I would really love to see us, depending on the way this new Cherokee Nation Shelter looks like. And if there's a, a crisis hub in the middle of it, I would love for us to utilize our current, you know, raft and peaceful warriors way in any way that we can. I know that we could use this money to build partnerships, to maybe staff people in that facility at certain times. Can you not use it for staffing?
No.
Or any It depends on the type of staff.
Depends on, yeah, but I, and I know that I've, I've spoken with you this before, but I'm just saying it out loud, that I just think that this money is, is a wonderful resource with so many incredible benefits for our community and I'm, I'm really excited. And I, I, I think that that I, idea of moving funds slightly around and is that in your, is that, does that need to be spoken in a motion?
It is actionable, yes.
Okay. So do you understand that, John Tyler? Can you speak for that, please? And then I'll, I'll motion.
So I'm trying to follow. Hundred and seventy thousand, for sure.
Authorize the expenditure of $170,000 of the opioid settlement.
The crisis.
Yep, yep.
We'll get it.
I know, John Tyler, his brain.
And I'd just like to say thank you for the public for your patience.
It's not using ARPA at all.
For me.
The, the, I understood the motion to be to use the 176 from the opioid settlement in lieu of the expenditure from ARPA to go to the same project, just not the ARPA funding. Okay, okay. Okay, okay.
That's just moved.
So moved.
Second it.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Hires.
Yes.
Motion carry.
I just want to take the liberty of this microphone for about thirty seconds and I. Got it. I hope you all look at what you do. Counsel. Because you've taken an agenda that there have been projects on here since twenty twelve. You've taken the South Muskogee project that's been on the books for at least seven years. You've taken um a roof on. The senior citizens building that's been ten years in the. Discussion and you're making things happen. And when we can get caught up and we can get the things done that have been needed in this community, I am really excited. About the places we will go. So I want to say thank you.
Very Dr. Seuss of you and I appreciate it.
Well, you're welcome. I I never read Dr. Seuss or had it read to me, but I do thank you because it's it's. You're cleaning up and you're moving forward and you're progressive in your thinking and I couldn't be more proud. But thank you.